All right, moving on. The consideration calendar. We have seven point one, two, three. Agenda of commentary minutes and consent to general contracts under $10,000. Do I have your motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Dr. Kinghay.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is true. Aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Number seven point one, consideration of vote to approve or not approve the following district reports. There are a number of them listed there. And any discussion, questions? We look to approve seven point one. Thoughts committed to approve?
Second.
Second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is true. Aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kinghay.
Aye.
Seven point two, consideration of vote to approve or not approve except for property needed to the districts like the city of Palm Beach City. I'm hoping you've got a little bit of explanation.
This is the parking lot that is, if you go into the child development center, you go into their parking lot and if you turn to the right, that's the parking lot we're talking about. Parking lot to the left is the, belongs to the center. Parking lot to the right belongs to the city and since the Y is no longer in operation, they don't have any need for that. And so that's the parking lot that we would be taking over.
It's the northeast corner of Seventh and Central. No, it's not. Southwest corner.
Southwest corner of Seventh and Central.
Straight east. One room.
Is the parking lot closer, closest to the east door of the east building?
West side of the corner on the old Burger B's. You know that. Showed right there.
I think there's about, Brett, I went over and counted, I forgot. How many over there?
Thirty.
There are thirty parking places in that parking lot.
We mow that little area now around it? Or does it like that?
No, because now we get to mow it.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Aye.
This is true. Aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kinghay.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Someone want to thank the city for that?
Yes, we do. We will be doing so.
Okay, seven point three, consideration, consideration of vote to approve or not approve the following contract agreements. Agreement A with SHR for purchase of Chromebooks from the church and arts, digital laptop and desktop computers including accidental damage coverage and warranties. B agreement with Galaxy Business Equipment Inc. for copyright and copyright maintenance agreement. C is agreement with Kagan Professional Development for training. D agreement with Livingston Sciences International for eye observation renewal. E agreement with Key Weath Equipment Company for the purchase of speak queen commercial grade washer and dryer for the athletic department. F agreement with Engage Learning Inc. for training facilitation and coaching in Engage Learning Model methodology for East and West Middle Schools and Palm City High School. And G project change request for image net consulting for overage scans. Anything anyone wants to discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to have a little explanation of some of these.
Okay. Which one do you want to discuss?
A million and a half dollars when we start paying.
Okay, this is the purchase of Chromebooks for, which will be used in our elementary classrooms. We're buying a cart for every two classrooms at the elementary sites of the laptops or netbooks that it's time for us to replace at the high school. We buy four hundred of those every four years as we give them to students as a freshman. They work their way, when they leave as seniors, they have the ability to purchase those. We have a new freshman class coming in next year, so it'll be time to purchase four hundred of these Chromebooks to them. And then we also replace teacher devices, about a third of the teaching staff each year. I guess a fourth of the teaching staff each year. Every device lasts four years. And so when you, what makes this such a big expense this year is the Chromebooks that we're buying for the elementary schools. Okay? Because that's something we've never, we've not had before.
How many were we buying for elementary?
Ryan, you don't have to talk to your head, how many were buying for the elementary sites?
We're buying fifty-four carts worth for the elementary sites.
So fifty-four carts worth.
How many were on the cart?
Thirty.
Thirty. Okay.
So the elementary's had nothing right now?
They have a scattering of iPads, but no, there are no, there are no classroom sets of carts. I mean, there may be, I think we had some that we bought at Union five or six years ago. Ryan, do you have any other sites that have anything like that?
All the sites have at least one lab or one cart. There's a, I think Lincoln's got multiple.
Yeah, so they have one lab or one cart, but they, they don't have anything near this much technology in their hands.
So what do we can do with all the elements to come back?
We sell them.
Or give away or?
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll declare a surplus and we'll try to, you know, we'll make them available, anybody who wants to buy them, but you know, in general, the market for that's not very high. And some of those, Ryan, to help me, but some of those labs we've not, they've gone past the four-year mark, haven't they?
Some of the carts.
Some of the carts have.
Because they have a couple, like Lincoln's got a couple carts that they bought on their own money that we haven't replaced.
Right.
But yeah, they're, they're getting, they're on, especially the schools for refreshing this summer, they're, they're at their end.
Right. I guess I have a question. I'd have, this obviously is a major change in our direction.
Well, this is.
For this particular device. And so two years from now, Ryan, you're not going to come back and say, we need to switch to something else harder. Because when we make a million and a half dollar commitment, we're pretty much saying this is what we're going to help with.
Well, I mean, it is, what's different is that it's Chromebook, but it's still a device that I would describe as a, you know, we used to have the old debate about whether you're going to be Windows-based or whether you're going to be, you know, Apple's based. A Chromebook operates in that Windows-based environment. I mean, it's a, it's, it's going to operate, it's going to, obviously it's a Google product. So rather than I, Internet Explorer being your web program, it's going to be Chrome rather than purchasing a Windows license. Are we personal Windows licensed with these? I guess we're checked first.
No, they're, they're licensed strictly through Google.
So you're going to operate in Google Docs, all right? So, you know, those are the, but as far as how they function and how they work, I think they're pretty interchangeable.
We had a committee of teachers that met about four times. We looked at several different devices, iPads, Chromebooks, tablets and tablets. And this is the, this is what they, that group of teachers. And we had representatives from every elementary school in the district.
And you know, you never know what's on the, what's on the horizon. But this, but the Chrome, but the Chromebooks work with, I mean, they interface with all those operating, all the, the systems we have to keep kids off inappropriate websites. They operate with that. So they, I mean, if, from my perspective, and I'm not a tech, I have a stretch of imagination. You know, I don't, I just think of these as another version of a Windows-based product. I mean, that's the way I see them.
And we also use them, they, they work, they, they integrate real well.
Ryan, why don't you come up and see if people can hear you?
I was going to say that they, they integrate very well with the testing system that we're using right now. I mean, today was the first day of testing, it's one of the best testing starts that we've had. And we were using some Chromebooks that we already had in the district to do that. And, and they, the way they are set up, the way we deploy them, we deploy them through the free Google domain for education that we're allowed. So it's, they, they, they're virtually seamless to roll out, they're easy to roll out, they're easy to get assigned to students. And it's just easier to manage.
And Ryan, how do they price-wise, I know, I mean, would you, what would the equivalent of a, of a HP product have been if we just stayed with HP? What is their equivalent for this? I guess would be my question.
It's, we, we are buying an HP Chromebook. It's a Chromebook, but it's sold by HP, so it's an HP product. But it's about, I'd say about a third of the cost of traditional laptop. We're spending just a little over the list, right? We're getting like $219 plus start warranty, so it's like $369 is what we're paying, which are typical laptops for 700 plus warranty. So we're, we're hitting that.
On two hundred and.
Just about, yeah.
And how's it compare with an iPad?
With an iPad, it's, it's got a deployment availability that we don't have with an iPad. It's also got a keyboard and it integrates to the Google Docs platform that we're, we're picking up at the high school that we've used at East for the last year and it's really starting to take off. We're really getting a lot of interest in it. It's easy to set up apps and it's also easy, you know, where like you mentioned, integrates with our content filter real well, so we don't have a lot of issues with kids getting around it. And they're always going to find a way, it's supposed to be what they're after, but it's, it's easier to manage, it's easier to put the content to them that they don't want them to be able to have, which IDI has required individual touching of every single one of them, you know, get it here today. But the Chromebooks are essentially managed once we build our domain, we'll be assigned the get as soon as we can have it.
I want to go at this time. Go ahead and ask to call for a motion of seven point three. Hello, I'm Ryan myself. This is very important. I'm going to approve.
Second.
Second from David. Call for the vote.
This is true. Aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kinghay.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Thank you. And any other items you want to discuss on contracts?
Yeah, we had talked in our subcommittee and I think the item at the board was going to tell you all in the curriculum committee. Didn't that one?
Yes, that's correct. We did discuss the curriculum, that's the, the program.
What you all decided.
With the group in Texas for Project Past Learning. And I think what Mr. Riley wants to know is the curriculum committee, what you thought about that.
But it's, it's a major change in the way we teach. A lot of things changed and we're trying to keep up. Yeah, we're trying to follow up. Oh, yeah. It's, I agree, it's going to be a major change. We've got, I think we need to step out there and make those, we're just going to make those changes. And I think Barbara's willing to lead us into that, so. Is that funding coming from General Fund?
Yes.
What is B through G?
We're looking for B through G.
Second.
Second by David. Call for the vote.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kinghay.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is true. Aye.
Thank you very much. Seven point four, consideration of vote to approve or not approve change order number five to the Woodsland Elementary and Roadblock and additional project. Additional of 2007, eight, nine, twenty-five. Further discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kinghay.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
This is true. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Seven point five, consideration of vote to approve or not approve except for bids to construct new restrooms at Sullivan Stadium and remodel the concession stand. Any other discussion?
We have a question on that. What we, $800,000 is the original estimate, the word, twenty-three percent or so over?
Estimate, it was $800,000.
Right.
And it was pretty close to that for the original estimate, yeah, later estimate.
So you're going to be able to value engineer $200,000 out of it?
I believe that Stephanie, she's listening, she's coming to ask you those questions. They're working on those value engineering efforts right now and Stephanie, you believe that we're going to get it close?
Yeah.
Yeah, but how much are we going to cut the project?
Half the tonnage are missing, but.
That's the part I hate when they go engineering, we lose half of the project and then we sit down our own three-year plans. Why did we do this? I mean, I've been there, I've done it.
I thought you weren't, I thought you weren't going to do the concessions.
That would be part of this B matter, is not, not doing the concessions. The original project was the restrooms and that's still going to happen. We were trying to make a better project for the future of the press box and do more for the concession stand. Concession stand grew bigger whenever we started to get involved in it. Whenever we wanted to add some things and make different concessions for the press box, it became too expensive. We wanted to do it a lot better than what really we needed. It just didn't work out well as far as prices concerned. So we're going to make, we're going to end this project, we're going to have the raceways in order to bring those services electrically and power to the press box when it's needed. So that is not going to be taken away from our press box. The concession stand is not going to get as good as what we would have liked or they would have liked to have had, but it, it later on will be.
But what if they decide they want it done, we come back and we've already built something and they can't do it?
I, we're going, the provisions will be there where we still can. It won't take anything away from it.
And that's what originally the project was, it said two, two new restrooms to accommodate a new facility. And as we got into the project, it was, well, can we, what else can we do to do those very things that you're asking about? And decided that the concession remodel appeared at the very beginning was pretty wanted. And decided that we would meet with representative from that, the government of that particular facility and go through the wants list, the wish list, and see what it would take to make it, what they truly want that area to be. Along with that, to see what measures would it take to go ahead and put in for the new press box facility. As Brett said, those, those provisions are pretty expensive. In talking with Lewis Associates, in talking with the engineers from PEC out of Wichita, none of the value engineering items that we're wanting to be, that we are looking at right now are going to take away or go backwards, I guess I should say. There'll be no, no rework or minimal rework when it comes time for the press box to be put in. There will be no, nothing that you will have to do without or that will harm any of the future improvements for that particular facility. You'll still have both of the restrooms, as Brett said, the conduit for all of the technology, the telecommunications, the data, the wiring, everything for the concession stand and for the press box is going to still come underground and come to the restroom facility. So all that would need to be done is just to tie onto it at that point.
But what if they want a large, concession stand later? Can't be done without, because I've been in that concession stand with work and it's not a pretty place to be.
I know.
Not, I haven't done it right to start with.
Yeah, I think if you remember.
It's $100,000, next time it'd be something.
Remember, the original plan though was that we, our staff, was going to do the concession stand renovation. When we first discussed, we would, you know, taking the restrooms out, building a new restroom area, that it was going to be our staff that was going to go in and renovate that concession area. In the drawing process, in the planning process, the concession stand renovation got added to the scope of the project. Okay? And so what the value engineering is going to do is just going to take that part of the project back out to get back to our original scope. And then we'll still be able to come in with our staff on our staff's time to be able to do that.
I'm, I'm missing something here. Originally for $800,000, I thought we were going to redo the restrooms and redo the concession stand.
No, that was never a part of it. It was always just the restrooms.
I think we always used the common phrase, restrooms and concessions. Now maybe we were going to do it with some of Brett's money out of the bill.
Yeah, that was the, the big plan was to get the, get the restrooms built, get them, get that, that would open up that space and the rest of, open up that space around the concession stand either side of it. Then go in and get the concession and just build us a new, kind of, take that area, repurpose it, expand the concession area and have this new area for the concession.
So what's seven point five doing now? Just the restrooms, nothing to the concession stand?
That's right.
Which is misworded, but okay. So basically the value engineering, really getting value engineering, it's just taking out the concession stand.
Well, there's some value engineering efforts also, because some of those prices came in higher than what they estimate. So yeah, we got the Bs in that.
So our restrooms are basically $800,000 is what we're saying. No, it's, we're a million for the restrooms.
No, 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 no. The million dollars is for the two new restrooms, the concession stand remodel and the provisions for the new press box.
Yeah, but the seven point five is asking for a million plus.
Well, that's just the, what the bids came in at.
Yeah, but, but they're asking us to approve a million plus here, which we're saying we don't need to.
Right.
That's right, that's right. Eric can kind of help us with that, with the law about this. If, when the bids came in, you had to accept what the bids came in, in total. And then you back off of that with value engineering and that's what you write the contract for. You have to initially start out by approving that a million and then hope that it all comes back down to $800,000 or thereabouts.
I'm just taking, how much was the concession stand by itself?
A little over $50,000.
Fifty dollars. Fifty-seven, I think, or something like that.
Yeah, but that's nothing compared to $1 billion.
That's what I'm.
You know, you're going to have to cut a lot of something out that I don't know about. That's what, I can't figure where you're cutting almost over $2 billion in. Where is it? Where's all the money?
On.
There's still $150,000.
As of last Friday, the dollar value that we had come down to was a little over $850,000. So we've cut about $165,000 out of.
Where is that cut? I mean, I'm just asking what, what type you have.
That's great.
Where are you, where are you chopping?
For one, in our general conditions price that we quoted to the school originally, not knowing how long or what timeframe we were going to have for this project, we had budgeted a longer time. So there was about $20,000 in supervision that we had estimated that we would need for this project, but we won't need at this point because we're shortening the timeframe and condensing it to a four-month project instead of a six-month project. So there was quite a bit of money. Also in those general conditions, there was erosion controls, silt fence, measures that we don't need because we're not disturbing more than an acre of area. There's quite a bit, there were some demolitions, carpentry work, like Brett said, about $57,000, I believe, in the concession stand alone. There was a misprint that was in the drawings for the heating air.
Well, that's what it was, that was a big price there.
It was not intended to be in there. It was just a strictly oversight and that was pulled out very quickly for controlling the units. There was quite a bit of electrical gear that we were able to change back and do for only the restroom facilities. The engineers had a really good plan for the new press box and the concession stand and it all worked to be able to have every, all the electrical for those three facilities packaged into a single unit basically for, for everything, the transporter, disconnect, the heater, everything. And that, with that convenience, it was also very expensive. So we backed out quite a bit of the electrical and for the future, the, they call it gear, as simple as that sounds. And there's quite a bit of money there also. However, the conduit for the press box and the concession stand will still be placed with the wire, it can just be switched out.
But do, we do a lot of gutting, that side, a lot of other demo work?
No, no.
No. The only demo work was the wall.
I'm just wondering, thinking. There's.
So after you're back.
Really, before they, and then you guys go back in and fix it.
The restrooms?
No. Session.
Because, because they shouldn't have to operate that, because we'll come back later on and knock out the wall to the old restrooms and make it larger. That's what we want. The old restrooms were going to become part of the new concession, part of the old concession stand, make it bigger. We can't do anything with that till we're ready for then to, to expand. Because they're still going to have to operate that there this year until we, until we come back.
So Stephanie, after your value engineering, if we wanted to put the restrooms back in, it's going to be less, I mean the concession stand, it's going to be less than $1,021,000. What's the new number going to be then? I'm kind of like a dog. I hate to do 90% of a project. You're that close to do it at all at the same time.
Well, remember, if you approve this at $1,021,000, okay? You know, you have the authority to, because we're not approving any change orders tonight.
Right.
We're just approving the scope of the project tonight. We can do all of it for $1,021,937.
I think we would.
Add the restrooms and all of it.
I think we would.
Well, I mean, that's what the price is. There's been a little value engineering. You're not going to save $100,000 on that if you do everything. Is that fair?
That is fair.
Okay. Once the bids came in, my direction to Stephanie was to get it back to $100,000. Now, the board can choose to do something different if you want to. Her, her direction tonight was to come to you, come back to this meeting with a plan for how we can reduce this cost back to closer to what the original scope of the project was. Obviously, if you choose to do all of it, then we can do that. You're, basically what you're doing tonight is you're setting the match price. What is, what is eventually taken out of the project, if anything's taken out.
Is a change order.
It will be, with change orders coming in.
But you said it was $57,000 for the concession.
So to get back to 800, there's got to be more.
That's what, they were talking about that a while ago.
Yeah, but there's, there was quite a bit in electrical that could come back out of the dollar because we weren't doing the concession and we weren't making provisions for the future press box. Yes.
But we can come back and talk to.
You know, one of the, just for example.
So we've got to, we've got to prove this is bad, I forgot about that. Then we come back and lower down to the change order.
One of them.
Or bond issues.
This is bond.
$600,000 in bond.
Yeah.
That's the original scope of this thing. And I increased it by $200,000 so we could get a better job at it. And that was my budget. And if it's over that, so we've got to get it back down. So I've added $200,000 to it already.
You know, one of the things we talked about in property committee meeting on Tuesday was that we asked Stephanie to look at all those changes, but then also to be able to give us a prize for the electrical panel that would go in to operate all of it, you know? So again, I don't know what that is because we haven't had that discussion yet, but that, if you look at all the electrical stuff that, that basically would be done, that would allow you just to plug in a press box at a later date or plug in the concession stand, what you're talking about, if I was, I remember right in our discussion on Tuesday or Wednesday, is the electrical panel itself. That's the big ticket item, that the electrical panel for a restroom is different than electrical panel that will operate the press box and then operate the concession stand. So that's the, in all of this, that's probably the big ticket item that's in that savings.
And with that, those gear, more wires, larger wires, it just makes the, everything expect, actually go up.
And the thought process too with that, once we got into this project, is knowing that someday the press boxes want to be in there. We have to, we have to. We have to, we have to run, um, new conduit, new wire from Robson to get it to the restrooms in and of itself. So the thought was to, while we already have a lot of those trenches, those ditches open, to go ahead and make provisions at that time for that, and then go ahead and get the correct panel for those particular situations instead of buying a smaller panel for the restrooms and then operating.
Yeah, we want to do that, that's for sure.
And that'll be an item that if we don't do that.
Off floor.
If we don't do that, then that'll be a change order that you'll be asked to approve. If we do it, then you won't see it because it's in this original scope.
Or when I do a press box. I mean, that's just the whole beginning, it's got to be done. Yeah, really, yeah.
But the question is, and what we have to do research on for the next month or so, is, you know, I mean, you always make a, a guess about is that the price going to increase ten percent over the next three years? Is it going to increase five percent? You know, so, I mean, we have some decisions still to make. Again, tonight, you're setting that maximum price, that's what you're being asked to do right now. It can be lower than this. Okay, and I guess obviously it can be higher because you always do a change order for more.
So Brett, if we approve two hundred thousand above your budget, where are you going to go get it?
Buildings.
If we have to.
Well, it has to come from buildings, I can't, you know, places can't come.
And there's, there's enough money in it, it's just some other project.
Yeah, and then maybe some of those other projects that we weren't completed, there'll be little bits of monies here and there if we can add to it, so, it shouldn't be difficult to get that.
This is like most to bring the item.
But remember, the reason we're talking about this is because, you know, this is not, Stephanie and Brett come in here telling you they want it, I told them to cut it eight hundred thousand dollars.
So, so- But you're not voting on eight hundred thousand, you're voting on a million.
Yeah, they're voting on a million, then we'll come back with change orders. And we'll just come back with change orders we want to do.
Or, like I said, if we put the concession stand in, and again, and again, I, that's the direction I've given them, before we do any reductions, you guys are going to see what those reductions would be. They'll be itemized for you, and you may decide not to take them. You may decide that you want to do everything that's on that list, and that's fine. But, again, I wanted to get back to eight hundred thousand dollars, because I thought it was too high. And I thought, I thought we all of you do all this for eight hundred thousand dollars. I didn't think it should cost us a million dollars to put in restrooms, to get it, the facility ready for the press box at some future date, and to remodel the concession stand. I didn't think it should cost a million dollars. And, you know, I'm not a construction guy, so I really don't know what it is costing. But that was my view.
You have a motion.
I'll have the motion be through. For a second.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt, aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Very much. Thanks, Eric. Okay, consideration of the vote to approve a proposed executive session for, to discuss possible termination, resignation assignment, resignation and employment of personnel, to discuss the employment of principals and assistant principals, discuss confidential conversations with the board adjutant concerning pinning plate and location, to discuss purchase or approval for appraisal of real property, and to discuss negotiations. Okay. I just need to discuss some.
Yes, we can, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Second.
I was thinking about the restrooms.
Mr. Newsom.
Sure, we're, we're waiting to our-
Mr. Newsom.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Riley. Mr. Riley. Mrs. Truitt, aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
We have a big discussion. Minutes of the executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk, and will remain confidential. Okay, seven point nine. Vote to approve and not approve the mill involving industry contracts for twenty fifteen, sixteen school year.
All my, all my motion to approve the principal's assistant principal.
Second, second by Donald. Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt, aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Seven point one oh zero, vote to approve or not approve recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation and employment of personnel as shown on pages seventy-three through seventy-second of the sixth of your board packet. I'll move to approve seven point one oh. Approved by Ryan Robinson. See for second.
All second.
Judy.
Mrs. Truitt, aye. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
New business.
There's no new business.
Now, new business? Sorry. Need motion for, to adjourn. To move. I'll have a motion for Judy. Call for vote.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt, aye. Truitt.
Thank you very much.